Okay, the motion to reconvene, Commissioner? Move to reconvene. Move back Mr. Duda, seconded by Mr. Morgan.
Okay. I will do a call. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Borgeson is present.
All right, we'll pick back up with the question.
Thank you. Counsel, thank you. I hope you got this on an hour right. The, where we left off was on page seven. And that's on the, I don't know how long this thing is, it's 15-plus pages long document. But you have.
I do.
Okay. So, we touched on this before, but 9.5 on page seven has to do with assignments. JCDC may not assign without the prior written consent. And we were back on page three dealing with this again, where we talked about that. I'm just wondering, you're coming back to us for written consent on consignments, is that right? Is that right? Is that how I read that?
Yeah. That never happened at the Cancer Center. There was no further assignment. Once the project manager and the outsourcing for the integrated project services was provided, that was the end of it. And integrated project services is part of this, and you're approving of outsourcing that.
It could theoretically, but it didn't. Is that what you're saying?
I don't know what that means.
It could happen. It's not, it didn't happen because it couldn't happen, it did, just didn't happen, is that right?
We would have to come back to the county and the Public Building Commission if there was further delegation needed.
On the 9.7 severability and survival, this kind of goes back to what we were talking about in terms of the termination thing. It says agreement allocating responsibility or liability between JCDC and the owner shall survive the completion of the work hereunder and the termination of this agreement. Shall survive the completion of the work, what would that entail for instance?
So mostly it's winding up. It's getting the contract, the punch list items, warranties, risk management and insurance, occupancy certificates, and then there's also CAD and BIM type information that needs to come over to the owner. So all of that is maintained by the project manager and the contractor during construction. So they have all their CAD drawings, they use a BIM program most likely. But it's as-built drawings, those kinds of things, that's and warranty.
Okay. The signatories to this document, it's Mr. Bloomingdale signing for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners with copy to the county attorney, administrator of the Public Building Commission.
So if it's 913, that's who's getting notice.
Okay. So, we have Commissioner on the JCDC listed as a notice person. I don't know if there's any conflict there, but that person on the JCDC listed as the chair of the JCDC board is not compensated for that capacity, is that correct?
That's correct.
But they serve as a JCDC board member, not representing Douglas County?
Correct. So to clarify, the role of the JCDC is to get the project done on time and on budget. So when Mary Ann is sitting as chair of JCDC, yes, she's also a county commissioner, but she has her project hat on when she's sitting as chair of the JCDC. Okay? It's a little like that when you have county commissioners serving on the Public Building Commission. They wear a Public Building Commission hat when they're in the public building.
Got you. We have some exhibits here that I'll just go through real quick because I think we've already kind of touched on this. So Exhibit A has a scope of work list, and 1.2, 1.3, 1.4 has to do with meetings and 1.5 with accounting services, budgets, monthly variance reports, and 1.6 is a little different. But those that I outlined, those fall under that same not subject to public records, public meetings exemption that you pointed out prior because JCDC is a 501(c)(3), is that correct?
So contractor meetings, doesn't matter where they are, those are not public. I mean, when you have project meetings for any current project, that's your contractor and your project manager talking about projects. So again, under the definition of state law, what is a public body, when a contractor meets with subcontractors, that's not a public meeting. And that doesn't matter if JCDC's doing it or the Public Building Commissioner of the county. Contractor can meet with their subcontractors all day.
That's 1.3, the pertinent project meetings, correct? That's the one you're talking about?
Well, so I would read all of those together. So this is the general services that we're expecting JCDC to undertake. They're going to do that by outsourcing and hiring Don Moleman to be the project manager.
So, just to drill down on that a little bit. 1.2 deals with a filing system, documents and records. Same response is 1.3 dealing with a pertinent project meeting, that you're saying not subject to public records requirements.
Well, again, we keep going back to this, but that's the same for every project. These are contractor meetings. These are not meetings of a public body.
Right. So, no.
They're not subject to open meetings.
Right.
But that's not unique to this project.
I'm not saying it is, I'm just trying to get on record that they are not. The same true with the monthly reports regarding the status of projects, comparison of the project budget to costs incurred, comparison of project schedule, any revision of the project schedule, summary of the change orders, same, right?
So the difference here is, in this instance, the JCDC is making the commitment to bring those to the county board periodically. So you will see those, some of those, as appropriate.
So some of these monthly reports, you're saying, could fall under, because they're submitted to us, the public records?
So again, I'm going primarily on what came to the Board of Regents from the Cancer Center.
Right.
And they had to provide real-time access to all of the uses and sources of the budget, the control budget, at any time. So complete transparency around the funding.
Right.
Periodically, they receive written and oral reports related to the Cancer Center project at a public meeting.
Okay.
Yep. And the design for that is to get that customized to what you're finding used and useful, at the same time sparing the JCDC board excess effort.
Okay. So 1.5, which regards accounting services, annual budgets, monthly variance reports, monthly project accounting services, and processing and coordinating the payment of the project costs, including architect, contractor, and consultant's payments. What would the role of the county clerk be in that process?
None. So I, you know, I think there's two difference, differences here. JCDC as a 501(c)(3) has accounting requirements on its own. So it probably will file an IRS tax return, does the 990 form that's required. Those are the kinds of reports that are contemplated there. What we did for the Cancer Center, what's intended here, is JCDC will have a skinny balance sheet. The bond proceeds will remain essentially with the owner, with Public Building Commission. JCDC will be approving and authorizing expenditure along with the project manager and the contractor and the architect. So those pay requests and those drawdowns, they are for authorization. At the end of the day, the funds, the bond proceeds are not part of the JCDC's accounting. They don't own that money.
So you're, if I get this right, going to submit like drafts to the Public Building Commission on an ongoing basis saying?
Draw requests.
Pay this contract.
Yep.
1.6, JCDC project manager shall be available for questions and follow-up by the telephone or site meetings. Questions by whom? By us?
JCDC.
Not by Commissioner?
I mean, except that our commissioners on the JCDC.
On 14, pre-development phase services, that's kind of where we're going into right now, right?
Correct.
JCDC, this is 2.1, shall select the contractor and the consultants, except for those listed in Exhibit B. And are those pre-selected? Those are on here.
That's part of the integrated project services, so that they are selected if you approve these documents. So you are using HDR and Keywood Building Group and Burlington Capital Construction Services and Baird.
Again, was the same lineup used on the UNMC?
I think, not Burlington Capital.
Other than that?
Yes. I mean, I guess Baird Home is new.
Same lawyer. Do you have a different flag that you flew then?
Well, I'm the general counsel of the university when the Cancer Center.
I see, okay, okay. 2.5, JCDC shall cause or provide for a project manager to coordinate any required environmental review of the project and advise and assist the county and PBC in obtaining all environmental permits or approvals required by the project, if any. You heard what we did this morning on the property of the Corps of Engineer property, right?
Yes, I was in the meeting.
And I questioned them relative to their state of environmental awareness down there, and they indicated that they had a study done, report, whatever. In this budget, is it anticipated that there would be remediation, environmental remediation costs on these sites?
So where we are is a construction cost estimate. And again, it's just for those components that I talked about. You know, we're doing as best we can to avoid a sticker price problem, but we don't have all of the current information on environmental site assistance. Phase one, you know, that's kind of older terminology, but you know, that is basically an interview base. You go, we talk to the owner and see what went on there, you look at historical records, it's a public records type review. Nobody's drilled soils and looked at soil conditions, and that is something we're planning to do.
Okay. So you're aware, I presume, that by exercising eminent domain, if we're successful, we will inherit from the current owner all of its environmental liability, whatever that may be, kind of sight unseen. That's what we did this morning.
Give him a break. First of all, I don't think we'd be assuming that unless we group right out an indemnification. Teresa may have better knowledge than I would, but normally, if you buy my property, then you find an environmental problem with it, I'm probably still could be liable, and then they pass back to a number of different people along the way.
Okay.
Most of the time, a phase one just tells you, you probably need a phase two. If I'm buying a building and you look at the history of it, they're going to be saying, hey, yeah, there used to be a repair shop there, gas station, they're going to tell you, you need to do a phase two. Thanks for telling you that.
On 15, upon approval, this is 2.11, by the owner of design development plans and specification, JCDC project manager shall, and then it's got duties down to, cause a project to deviate from the approved drawings and requirements by the owner. Does Douglas County vote on these specifications?
Yeah.
And this document authorizes JCDC just to go ahead and pretty much finalize those, correct?
Yes. But they're acting as owner's representative.
Sure.
Mary Ann is the chair.
Uh-huh. On 18, we're getting very close now.
I thought you were going to ask me about 2.12 and 2.13.
Well, I can, if you want to go back.
But for clarification, I do have a red line on those. We found some language there that was a little confusing. Actually, I credit Paul Cohen and the Public Building Commission for raising that.
I read those into the morning.
She did read those into the record already.
That's great. Thank you. I have them both.
Yes.
Thank you. The 18 question that I have is on 4.1, while performing the work, the JCDC project manager shall promptly inform the owner of the JCDC project, JCDC's project manager, the owner, if the JCDC project manager becomes aware of any security concerns and/or unsafe conditions. Is JCDC governed by, what is it, the Federal Safety Health Act?
OSHA.
OSHA, yeah.
Yes, so there's no exemption that would apply here.
That is that one, and I only have a couple more on the ancillary service agreements. And you're still the drafter basic guy on that, right?
Again, the starting point was what we used for the Cancer Center, and I was the principal drafter on those, so.
So on page one, you have one, county and PBC obligations, county and PBC shall blah blah blah. And then on page two, Roman numeral two, necessary accounting, internal control system to establish and maintain financial business and legal records in compliance with applicable standards and guidelines as reasonably requested by JCDC. Again, is there a role for the Douglas County clerk in this and public office in this?
No.
Okay. For the reasons you stated previously?
Yes.
Then in C, on the same page, pay reasonable costs and expenses incurred by JCDC as previously approved in writing by the county. Is that approved by us as a board or by the designate?
Well, it's, the bond proceeds essentially for the project, and so.
So when you say that, you're saying the bond proceeds are Public Building Commission's bond proceeds?
Yes.
But this says expenses incurred by JCDC as previously approved in writing by the county?
Yeah. So this is that corporate expenses kind of thing? So mostly what we're talking about here is going to be an insurance policy, it's going to be the administrative expenses of the JCDC.
And is that that $5 million policy that we talked about before?
No.
Different policy?
Yeah, DNO policy.
ENO?
DNO, directors and officers.
Oh, okay. And the administrative costs, do we have a handle on that ballpark?
Pretty minimal. I'm trying to remember from the Cancer Center, but it was $5,000 maybe a year. It literally was meeting spaces and copying expenses.
Okay. Down below, under 2C, install the necessary accounting, internal control systems to establish and maintain all financial business and legal records in compliance with applicable standards and guidelines. Again, we have clerk requirements on this, but you're saying that's not what we're talking about here?
No, we're going to follow the nonprofit accounting standards. But I think that anticipates the question, what do you do here? We need to get with the auditors. Joe has helped start that conversation, but the bottom line is, there's an agreed-upon procedure, so we track the project, and that keeps the focus again on getting done on time and on budget. But we want those financial records to be transparent, we want them to be audited, that's the best practices. There is a difference between Gatsby standards and with the nonprofit users, but that's why we talk to the auditors and get that clarified.
Okay. Following page three, under confidentiality, except to the extent that disclosures is required by law, JC agrees, and notwithstanding that foregoing any such information, confidential individuals shall not include any information which has been previously disclosed by PBC or county to the public and/or otherwise in the public domain. So anything that comes to us, we, you know, that's public records, public information, anything that we have physical control over.
Correct.
But anything that you have is not.
So let me just maybe get you to the finish line here.
Yeah.
The concern there is on a donor who wants to be in the community. That's how that language got in there.
So the donor comes to JCDC and says, we'd like to give X number of dollars to this project, don't use our name.
Or say how much.
Sorry.
Or say how much.
Or say how much?
Yes.
And so then you turn around to the board, which also includes one of our members, I mean, you report to your board?
Sure.
This information, but then that board member is precluded under this provision of reporting to us that information, is that correct?
Correct. For donors in particular. But that would be no different than if you were on your private nonprofit board and they had something confidential they shared with board members on that outside board, you would not, because of your status as a county commissioner, treat that as public. It's confidential for the board, it's confidential for you.
I got you. Following provision five, reporting requirements, JCDC shall timely file its audited financial report with the county in care of Joe Lorenz. Joe's a, aren't you an officer?
I'm treasurer.
Treasurer, yes. So you file with Joe as our finance guy, not as your treasurer, right?
He will be wearing his JCDC hat.
Financial report with the county in care of Joe Lorenz.
Yes.
So he's wearing his Douglas County.
He's wearing both hats.
Yeah. With a copy to PBC in care of Paul Cohen, financial statements filed shall include any management letter received by JCDC, JCDC's Internal Revenue Service Form 990, if any, and any other documentation or reports required by the county or the PBC. So any documentation that the board requests of you, is that right?
And again, I think the periodic reporting is designed to get you what you find used and useful.
But if we needed more specificity, this would allow us to request.
I would expect you to have that conversation with Mary Ann, and we're going to get you what you need. With the idea we don't want to go overboard, but that's the goal, is to make it used and useful.
Got you. There's another termination clause in here, number six, this agreement shall take effect as of the effective date and shall continue until A, dissolution of JCDC, B, termination of the owner's representative agreement between the parties, whichever occurs first. Upon termination of the agreement, any and all obligations shall A, be assigned or transferred to a third party through a written consent of the county and the PBC, or B, cease to And we touched upon this before, where we terminate you, but there's contractual obligations that don't just go away. And so how does this square with that, the previous termination clause?
So read together, I think the idea that the JCDC serves at the pleasure of the county board is the focal point of your trust and confidence in the board members there to get the project done on time and on budget. And that's been the task for JCDC as it was put together, is to get the right group around the table to focus on getting the project done on time and on budget.
Got you. There was a late document, conflict of interest policy, which I just got this morning, I don't know if that came in, but it wasn't around yesterday, right? This one?
I think it was added yesterday, but I.
So it's an attachment to the ancillary services.
Right. So just having seen it and perused it, I mean, I guess I'm curious as to why, why do we have this?
Primarily because it's a check-the-box requirement for every nonprofit corporation. They are required, literally, when you file your 990 form, you have to check the box, that you have a whistleblower policy, a records policy, and a conflicts of interest policy. It's not to say that if you don't check the box, it's illegal, but I think you're raising a red flag for the IRS.
Okay. So in here, on the second page, under number two, non-public inside information, it's a conflict of interest to disclose non-public inside information relating to JCDC and/or any of its affiliates, business and/or use such information for the personal profit or advantage of any covered person, his or her immediate family, or any other entity of which the covered person is an employee, officer, director, or steward. What is that? First of all, what's a covered person?
So covered person is broadly defined there, it does include the dual role capacity folks. But the idea there is, you're not supposed to use the information you gain from being part of JCDC or an officer of JCDC or going to a JCDC meeting for personal gain.
So like an insider trading kind of a prohibition?
Yes.
Okay. So the covered person seems to be JCDC employees and officers and people working for Burlington Capital Construction Services.
Correct.
That's the universe of covered.
So that covers Don Moleman, the project manager.
And I think, you'll be happy to hear, that's probably all I got. One more.
Joel, I want to be sure that I think the effort is to make certain that we're transparent as possible with all information as the J C D C go forward with this matter. Is that accurate?
Yeah, especially on the control budget and the uses and sources of funds, which is kind of the key task that the J C D C is charged with. Getting this done on time, I always say on time and on budget. People get tired of me hearing it, or hearing it from me, I should say. But realistically, for projects as big as this, time is money. So getting done on time is very much a part of the charge here. You know, I don't know that we've worked out all the details, but for the cancer center, they did have real-time access to all of the expenditures related to the project.
It's also important to note you mentioned the cancer center, we hear that a lot. But the fact is, and I said it at a board meeting two weeks ago, this is being done the same way currently that the H D R building is being done, with Nado and the management instead of a nonprofit, similar to what Keywood's going to do on their downtown multimillion dollar project of their new headquarters, with Nado again being the party involved in that situation. Is that accurate, what I'm saying? And don't hesitate to correct me. I know you want to be nice to commissioners.
I do. And you're exactly right. We developed the cancer center model and the development corporation idea, really canvassing a lot of the private sector and how they approach these projects, whether it's a large company. But like I say, this is special for this. It's not how the county does business on everything they do. It's because of this being covering three years for the construction and the fact that you need a contingency that runs that long. So you can't play overs and unders on this in a micromanaged way. And I think that's the way private owners approach this. They capitalize a project and say, we're going to build to a budget with a team with integrated project services. That's very common right now.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to say is, and Joe can chime in on this. The other part of it is, we keep hearing this hundred and twenty million dollars, but that's a number out there that we want to be prepared to do bonds sooner rather than later. Make sure we have enough, because you can't go back in and get more of them. And the other part of that is, the interest rates we know are changing, and that's a positive. And a one percent increase starts to become more than a hundred thousand dollars a month in just interest expense. The other part of that is, the square footage isn't totally determined yet, because we want to be very careful. And players, a member of the building commission, as is Commissioner Boyle here. And the fact is, we want to, anyway, I personally want to be careful that we're not moving out of space here that's not going to be occupied and we're painting around on two different places. So this board is going to be, I think, pretty careful in the final analysis as we look at that square footage of a eight-story, ten-story, whatever it's going to be. And I don't think there's a certainty in that regard, but it's giving the amount of money, which Joe, if I'm correct, we can turn part of those bonds if we don't need it all. We only take so much of the bond money that we finally got committed.
Well, it's the building commission's money, so they could take that money and apply it towards interest or principal, or, right? So I think part of the question here, again, is the advantage of using integrated project services. So it is that ability to do course corrections, to come up with new ideas as you are designing this. That isn't, if you do this in a hard bid, you literally create the expectation, you know exactly what you want, and you're going to get the lowest possible price for exactly what you want. Here's my hundred percent complete design drawings, go build it. Those projects are pretty hard to find at this level. You know, where you're building a whole new facility, plus it takes the conversation with the users to a different problem. This is what we built for you, it's not exactly what we need. So by integrating the project services, you get the commitment of H D R and Keywood Building Group that you can program this to build to the budget and accommodate some changes. Not crazy changes, but you're going to deal with change orders. You're going to deal with things that make this building fit your useful needs better.
Okay. And lastly, Commissioner Borgeson.
Let's just come back to that one. But from the county's perspective, you know the building commission can do that. And let's say the project comes in at ten million dollars less, but the county's entered into this long-term lease agreement with the building commission to affect, you know, that's how we're going to fund it. But, okay, but that's, I guess, a subject of the bond. So you see what I'm going to, if it comes in less, how does that mechanism work?
That's a good problem to have, and I'm glad we're talking about it. Mind you, the cancer center did.
Yeah.
And the excess was returned to the owners in the allocated formula. So that's the...
So there's an allocated, there's a mechanism?
There is a mechanism to do that.
Okay.
You know, bottom line, for our purposes, you know, we always have a sticker price problem with big projects like this, but it's unfair to come to you without a construction cost estimate.
Right.
I mean, you can read in the literature in this industry, construction cost estimates are problematic. They get you in this sticker price problem. That's why the next step in this with the integrated project services is around the control budget. You get better and better information, then you get the guaranteed maximum price, then you're going to have a real confidence about the numbers, because that has K B G with real-time information looking at this project and what it's going to take to get it done.
So who develops the control budget?
That's the team. And that includes the county and the public building commission, absolutely.
Who?
Don Moleman will certainly help drive that. But the control budget process includes the end users, it includes the county, it includes the public building commission.
Okay, the la, go ahead, Jim.
No, I'm done, I'm done.
Lastly, I was going to say to Commissioner Borgeson, I think your intent, from my understanding, is to make sure that we get monthly updated information on everything going on, the commissioners and so on, and publicly to talk about that.
Yes.
And again, I'm repeating this, because I think it's important to all of us, and I want to be clear, is that we want to have as much transparency as we can and make this as cost efficient as we can. Those are the goals, and on time and so on. But taking advantage of the day's interest rate is of paramount importance. Because I know on commercial real estate, if you were buying something nine months ago, you could get a four percent rate. I know today that they're getting five and five and a quarter on commercial real estate, because the rates have increased. And one percent, when you're borrowing a hundred million dollars, starts to become significant money. Monthly significant money.
Now, I, it was my understanding we were talking, I forget which meeting, but at like the monthly meetings, at status meetings, that there would be some sort of report that showed the expenditures or, you know, that all this would be tracked on a monthly basis. And there'd be a report of some type that people could look at to get a feel of, you know, where you are versus budget and...
Yep.
That's it? That's all part of what we'll get, reports on?
Right. We want that to be as used and useful as it can be. And that's important for the project.
Reports would be developed on a monthly basis.
Okay. I'm done.
Any other questions?
One last comment. So I want to credit all of you. As an elected official, I know these decisions are not easy. What you have in front of you, the last courthouse that was built was over a hundred years ago. These decisions don't come easy, and I understand that. And I appreciate you for going through this carefully, thoughtfully. But the best thing you can do for your project is to be certain about the go-no-go decision and then help your contractors get this done on time and on budget. And the J C D C is uniquely positioned to do that.
And what you said is appreciated and so important, truthfully, because we're not doing something for twenty years or forty years. And yes, it's a big project, but it's a hundred-year project.
Yes.
And that's why it's also important that we not be building out on the Blair High Road and trying to transport people down here and so on. I mean, we're committed to this building.
Okay, so now let's go in order. Is there a motion to approve item two? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgeson. Roll call.
If we could ask for clarification, there was a motion made earlier in the meeting by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Kraft, to amend one of these items. There was no...
It's the owner's right to claim it.
Okay.
If you want, we'll just go in order, and I'll bring that up when we get...
We just want to make sure we know which item it was, because we weren't clear even then. Yeah. And there were no motions on anything. So, okay, that's fine. And that's fine.
Yeah, the second heard through that.
Okay, we did not hear that. Okay, so on item seven A two.
You got a motion and a second.
Motion by Boyle, second by Borgeson?
Roll call. So, question?
Okay. This is the reimbursement agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, this can go to all of these, because I have the same concerns relative to all of them. There's been no public hearing really on any of this. So what we're doing here is going ahead on a hundred and twenty million dollar, biggest ever capital construction proposal. You're binding yourself to that, recognize it. That's what you're doing. I am going to ask the same as I did on the other one, that we lay these over for four weeks to allow some decent public input in this and not do it like a rush job. I appreciate what you're saying about this should last for the next century. Consequently, we should take time in considering going forward with this. There's no reason to rush into this. This is a big tax increase if you do it without a public hearing. We're doing it with no going forward, really, public oversight, as you heard. Having gone through this pretty line by line, no public meeting requirement, no public record requirement. They're just going to drive the bus from here on in. You're giving the keys to this corporation, for good, bad, or indifferent. I don't question their competence in doing this. I'm just saying, you haven't done this before as elected officials. You're turning over your responsibility to them. Without asking a couple of real questions, nothing on finance has really been discussed on this at all. For instance, why are we using a double A bond rating? If you're interested in interest rates on bonds, when we have a triple A bond rating of our own? Why? Why do we do that? You're automatically going to pay more money by going with the public buildings bond rating, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, which is double A, than you would with our triple A bond rating. You're going to do that, you're going to pay more money for doing that. There's no good reason to do that. This is not a solution that in its entirety is good or bad. It's got portions of it that make sense and that we need to do. The courthouse portion of it, absolutely. But that's not everything in this package. If you look at drawings, you've got stuff in here that does not have to be in it. Lawyers do not have to be in the same building as the juvenile judges. A fraction of them have anything to do with that court. We can do for less, a better job for the county and for the lawyers involved by refurbishing another building downtown. We don't have to take our campus at Forty Second and Woolworth and move it down to make it a junior Douglas County Correction Center. That's bad for the kids. It's a bad solution, and it's the most expensive one that we could possibly get. We're also losing an opportunity going forward. You're going to make us strapped for cash for the foreseeable future. So kiss goodbye Douglas County Health Center upgrades. Kiss goodbye mental health upgrades. Kiss goodbye Douglas County Corrections, solving your crowding and staffing problems. And kiss goodbye doing something about the two-hundred-million-dollar pension deficit that we enjoy. Kiss all of that goodbye. As a matter of fact, you're endangering the Douglas County Health Center by doing this. We don't have to do this, we don't have to do this today, certainly. We should have public input. You heard from people this morning, there'd be more lined up around the block to put their two cents worth in, and we should listen to them. So I move that we lay this entire package over for four weeks to allow that to happen.
Is the motion a second? Motion dies for like a second. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, for the record, ma'am. Jim, I've been someone who's been on the wrong side of things, so I can really appreciate you. But really, this is, you know, the reason, for example, we don't, I'm going to be very brief. The reason that we're talking about the attorneys moving over there is that Tom's down there in a dungeon with no light. Jim's got five different places, some of them which are underwater. Right, he's got people in hallways, as you probably know. So I mean, this is a chance to get them out of there and create more room in this building and that building and everywhere else for judges, courtrooms, which are terrible pressure. We've been remodeling that building, as you know, for about thirty years, I think. So anyway, this is our chance to get some space. It's not the one I wanted, but I didn't get my way, it didn't happen. And this is, they need to be close so they can get in and out of the district courtrooms and particularly the county attorneys, public defenders as well. So I mean, this is, this is the solution. And the reason I encourage you to come up with a plan is that come up with one that's an alternative, including the money. Where in the hell is it coming from? I mean, if you can get one in for less than eighty million, that'd be wonderful, but I don't know. That would probably trigger a tax increase of monumental proportions as well. We're not endangering any of these things, we are going to meet our obligations. So I support this. I, you know, am not rattled by your presentation. And I really appreciate it, because as I said, I've been on the wrong side of a lot of issues. And with all due respect, you are today.
I appreciate that, Mike, thank you. I am going to bring alternatives that will be a lot less money, a much better solution, and solve the same problems that we're talking about. There's a place for portions of what we're talking about. I can see the courthouse over there. Doesn't need to be a ten-story tower attached to a downtown youth jail and a parking lot that downtown Omaha doesn't need.
This is an opportunity to use the talents of all these different operations that have been in force and in use, driving down the number of occupants of our juvenile centers. Plummeted. We still have the problem with the race, that's no doubt about that. But this is the direction it's heading, this is the way we should be moving. So I, I'd like to vote on it, get it over there.
Okay. You got a motion and a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
Yes. Okay. Item three, I'm going to act for the approval and the second, and then we'll add the two amendments. So we'll go to item three, is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Boyle. What I have is the two amendments are the points that Commissioner Borgeson read into record that were altered and as noted that you got to scratch. And also language proposed that Teresa has, if you want to read it.
If that motion were withdrawn, do we still want to move forward with that amendment?
Well, that's, I thought the group vote, that's the case, it was covered.
We had it covered.
Okay. Well then, the only motion noted is the corrections made by Commissioner Borgeson there, and that's noted. We have a motion, is there a motion for the amendment? By Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle. Discussion. Please vote on the amendment.
On the amendment that was presented by Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Duda?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kraft is absent? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
Yes. Now, vote to approve item three as an amendment.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
Yes. Motion to approve item four, is there a motion?
Some more.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. So you know, discussion, roll call. So, you know, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Borgson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft is absent, excuse me. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?